Dayton is just getting online to the two. Okay. All right, everyone. So we're live streamed on YouTube and I'm gonna call this, or I guess I'll call this order 11:04. As I said, I'm gonna try to turn off my camera. It was, oh, here we go. Okay, so. Here with Kate Schmuckpepper, Jen Chaffler, and. We are called to order 11:04. Okay, first item is, oh, public comment. All right, sorry, gotta go, I'll go back on camera. So, public comment, if anyone is interested in making a comment, please raise your hand. Probably Reese is the only non-press person. Okay, I don't see anybody's hand raised. Just double check that. Nope. Okay, so I'm gonna go back off video. And so, no public comment. So, the next item is discuss policy review and updates for 2025, 2026. I prepared a spreadsheet of all of the. These are all of the bulleted policy suggested changes from MASC.
Going back.
Going back, as far as I know, going back forever. So, we had not done 23, 24, and 24, 25. So that, and before that, we had done them. So that's what this is inclusive of. Some of these have, so the comments on the far right will indicate if we've taken action, which we have on some of them, which we did back in June. And I don't think, we actually didn't do any in August, at least according to the minutes. So then, these are all of the ones that they have on their bulletins for us, well, for all school committees to take action. And then, you know, there's the discussion of doing the entire, you know, the entire policy manual.
So, I only asked how far back you went because I did the same exercise.
Okay, do you have more?
And have many more. I went back to March.
To bulletins?
Twenty-three bulletins back to March.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, because I thought I covered all the way back. So there were like six or seven bulletins, or eight bulletins, or something. All right, then we'll have to go back, we can add them, or we can merge. Did you do a spreadsheet?
I did do a spreadsheet.
Okay.
So, we'll have to merge. And I sort of broke them out into three categories. So, I did minor, where MASC was recommending minor edits. And there are review ones that are like bottom comma or. And then, where the edits were more substantive.
Okay.
And then, I might.
Did you share that document?
No, but I can.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah. And then, there's 13 new policies that MASC has recommended.
Okay.
I think it would be.
Did you cross-reference this against our policy manual?
I, yes. So, I made a master spreadsheet with all of our policies.
Yep.
And then, I just made notes about, you know, ones.
Because there are many there, many, that need to be updated.
Right.
They weren't necessarily on the, on the bulletins, though. Like, they could have gone back for, they, like, I just went through the actual bulletins. But I think there were many that probably go back to 19, 20, 21.
I didn't go back that far. So, I went through, I went on the MASC site, searched for their policy newsletters, and went through the lists of policies that were on there.
Okay.
So, that's what this is.
Okay.
What I, but, I mean, we have to start someplace, so we can start with the ones that are on.
Okay.
Your spreadsheet.
Okay. So, as I said, some of them have already been done. I normally do them by letter category, but we can just go through them. It's, you know, it's fine. The first one is EFE Civil Rights Complaint Policy for Child Nutrition Programs. That is, that we need to adopt.
Yep.
IGA and IGD are combined, right? So, that we need to basically replace. That's the curriculum development and adoption. IMGA, I think we approved. IMGA, we did approve. So, that's all set. To my knowledge, I don't know that they've been uploaded, so I need to go back and check. Remove Organization of Instruction. That's their recommended, so I think. We need to give this to John, because he just needs to review this. I think there was a question mark there on whether we want to remove that or not. So, I think we probably got to get their opinion on that. Curriculum Adoption is also suggested to be removed. I think we should also just question that. IHAI Occupation Education is also suggested to be removed. Homeschooling, we did that. That is a dupe, I think. Yeah, we, we did that. I have that twice on here. I knew that. That has been removed. Also suggested, we remove IBH-E, which we did, right? Remote Learning. Yeah, remove and adopt IBHE. So, I think they're asking us to remove IBHE-dash-E and adopt IBHE. I think that's.
If I remember right, I did not find those in our online policy.
We probably never had.
Maybe we never even adopted it.
Probably never did. But they're asking us to adopt IHB-H-E. That's what my notes show. Which is a remote learning.
Yep.
IL is, IL is Evaluation of Instructional Programs. That, I believe, we gave to Julia and John, and I don't think we've heard back.
Okay.
IMA, Teaching Activities and Presentations. I thought. So, I had a question on that. They're suggesting we remove it, and I was just gonna ask you whether we should keep it. I think they already gave this to me. I'll see if we got back to it. BEDH, which is Public Comment at School Committee Meetings. They're asking us to adopt it. Do we not already have that?
We have one.
Yeah, but.
You know, on my list of ones where they're, the recommended changes were substantive, so.
So, the question is, do we want to adopt theirs?
Right.
We approved CHA and CHC. That was approved already, June.
Okay.
IGB is Student Services Program. They're suggesting we replace with, you know, update, update to the MASC. I think we probably should ask Lisa Marie.
Okay.
To chime in on that. Parental Notification to Sex Education, IHAMA. Again, we would need John to just give his okay on that. Student Services Program, IHBA. Also, probably have to have Lisa Marie look at it. IHBD Compensatory Education, we already replaced that. IHBF Homebound Instruction, we replaced that. IHBG Homeschooling, we replaced. IHBG-dash-R, we did delete that addendum. We replaced IHBH. IHBE, we talked about. Instructional Materials, we replaced. IJR, IJ-dash-R, Reconsideration of Instructional Resources. That, we already, let me just confirm, we already dealt with that. I thought with the, I don't know, maybe we didn't confirm with John. We did the. The procedure for, maybe that's what this is.
I think.
The procedure, yeah. It was in the wrong place. We put it in the, not in the wrong place, we put it with, I thought we put it with the library, reconsideration of library materials. Let me just ask, which, I don't, I don't.
Oh, combined.
Yeah, no, it was. Let me go, we'll have to, let me send him an email and ask him what that was. That, he was reviewing that. Because it was very, it was similar to the, maybe that's what it was. It was similar to the reconsideration of library materials. But this is instructional resources.
Okay.
So, we probably just need to, does he want us.
Right.
Does he want us to replace this and keep this procedure? Library Materials Selection and Adoption, we need to confirm that with John. Why? I think we did, but, all right, it's the library to reconsideration, we did. Field Trips, IJOA, that I had a question on for John. The, if you, if you see, the MASC field trip, particularly overnight, is pretty short.
Okay.
Ours is many pages length, in length, which was drafted by our attorney.
Okay.
Because we do these international trips, which I'm not sure every school district does that, and I think it's pretty robust.
Okay.
So, that was the question I had, you know, for this, you know, the committee, or for John, that, and/or our attorney, should we keep, should we keep ours?
Right.
I kind of think we should. IKAB Student Progress Report, we approved. Graduation Requirements, we. Need to review that with John.
Yes.
ILD Student Submission to Educational Surveys, we, that's still outstanding.
Right.
Which we can discuss that in a second. Teaching About Controversial Issues and Speakers, we have, we approved the replacement. Animals in School, IMG, we approved. Competency Determination, that we need to, John needs to weigh in on that.
Right. And we have till December 31st.
Yeah. Graduation Requirements, that was a dupe, sorry. So, so now, here are these new ones in the latest bulletin.
Yep.
Guess and Solicitation by Staff, which is this issue around raffles.
Right.
So, I guess we probably should just have John, you know, you know, just take a look. But I have no idea whether we do raffles or not, but we might. I don't know.
I don't know.
We'll have to ask him, because it basically says we can't.
Right.
JJE Student Fundraising Activities, they're asking us to replace with theirs. One thing I will say about that.
Student fundraising?
Yeah. Well, we can, I guess we can discuss when we come, there's a line in there that we have always had, and it's still in there, that says it strongly discourages, strongly discourages door-to-door solicitation.
Okay.
We do door-to-door solicitation. I'd never liked the door-to-door solicitation. But I think we should at least just, you know, sort of run that by John and see what he has to say about that. KBE Relations with Parent Boost Organizations, same thing, they're asking us to review, replace. I think that's also raffles in there?
I think that raffles came up in a couple of them, I think it was that one.
So, ECAB, which is Access to Buildings and Grounds, I don't think we had that.
It's a new, I think it's a new policy that they're recommending.
Right, okay, because I looked at it, I don't have it, so they're looking for us to adopt that. Visitors to School, they're asking for us to adopt. KIEFBA, also, this is new, School Food and Nutrition Meal Modifications.
Right.
I think we should give this to John. He may have. John Constantino, who's the food, just review this. I, it does say that, like, we will modify meals.
Right.
For everybody, based on dietary, I don't know if we're doing that, or we can do that, or I guess we have to. It appears.
It appears. So, I think we should.
Yeah. The Parent Advisory Councils, that was also, I think, for Lisa Marie.
Okay.
Or John, whatever, but it does say, so it references specifically CPAC, which I thought we had, but I guess we didn't have an actual policy. But it also says if you have more than 100 ELL or multilingualers, that we have to have an E version of CPAC. So, I don't know.
I don't know where we are.
Where we fall on that. Right, yeah. So, we would need to ask, I mean, you know, actually, we could probably just adopt it, and if we don't have that.
Then we don't.
Then we don't have it. So, actually, that's, that's probably, that might be an MASC question. As well, like, if we don't have it, should we modify it or adopt it?
Yeah.
Although, I suppose if you're at, like, you know, 95 kids.
Right.
So, that's all I had. So, where, all right, so where, I'm kind of mixed up with the letters, so I don't know if you did it by, oh, no, you did it by category?
I did it by category, but I did go by, you know, in order, like.
You have it as a spreadsheet?
I have it as a spreadsheet. If you have.
Can you? I wonder if I have you email it to Lisa Nanny, and she can print it?
She's in there, I can print it.
Lisa? Lisa? Yeah, do you mind emailing it to? Do you mind emailing it to Lisa?
Yeah.
And she'll print it out. It's on its way right now. We probably should merge the two, and then we can give it to the one documented job.
Yeah. I will, I will, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, that one, that first page.
Yep.
Those are the minor, the ones that have really minor edits.
Okay.
And I am happy to just sort of, like, take charge of bringing these forward.
Well, that's fine, I think, but it's hard to, like, we need to determine how many at a time we're gonna do, because it can get a little overwhelming. So, Review Changes 323, so was it a bulletin from 323?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I have the bulletins, so, well, I can't see them, because, okay. So, even if, I mean, so, I, because I think it's sort of. Helpful for the school committee members to know what, like, what is it, you know, what's the change.
Right. So, there's, it probably printed on another note, there's, like, on the next page, there's a, I had a column where I noted what the change was. And I actually. Started in.
What was this? No. Oh, so maybe this is. AA. You said there's another, so it might be the one she printed, it didn't print.
So, this column, I've been making notes of what exactly it is.
No, it didn't print.
And I worked with Stephen to get our, the PDFs of our policies put into Word format.
Okay.
So, that we can just redline, you know, so you could have a copy of the policy and see exactly what change is being recommended.
Be more than we need to do it, okay. Because, I mean, if they're just simple change, like, I mean, when you said, what is it, like a punctuation change?
Punctuation.
I don't.
Addition of a comma, there's places where it said parents, and now you'd be making it say parent slash guardian. There's policies where the old version uses children, and it's being changed to student. So, really not.
Okay.
Seems like a lot of work.
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy to do.
That's fine.
That piece of the work.
You want to do it. And that goes through, is that what this whole document is?
I asked her to print the three different tabs, so I don't, so there's, there's 30, I guess.
I was gonna ask you if I could have done, right?
I have no idea. I mean, I screwed it up. I have no idea. Let's see if Stephen can help me get into my laptop. I have my, I know you'll. Here's my, here's my. Noted on my face, so when I do it. I might have changed, I have no idea. Maybe I changed it. I've tried my, my email address. Okay. From here or from?
Yeah, that password, I think it has changed.
Oh, can you see it?
No, because it's the same one that does the Zoom meetings.
I tried that, which is, yeah. Try it again. This one right here.
No, let me, I'll check for that.
Tried both of them. Oh, wait. I mustn't have, you didn't ask instead of dollars, I'm gonna second man, okay. So, that Zoom and the laptop are the same?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So, did you? You need another to me?
I can share. It's a Google spreadsheet, so I can share it with you.
Google.
So, in your email, you should get a notification that I shared a document with you.
All right.
Okay. So, if you look on the bottom, there's four tabs.
Okay.
Every policy we have.
Wait, Master List is every policy?
I just made a list of every policy that we had in our policy manual, so. And then, Minor Edits. And you can see in column H, those are the ones I've looked at and my notes of what. And there were some that the MASC bulletin called a minor edit, that I moved off of this page and on to substantive edits. Either because I thought they were edits that merited discussion before we moved forward with them, or because there were notable differences between our policy and the MASC policy, and so. And then, Substantive, I haven't done much in the way of looking at the policies, it's just a list of what they are recommending changes to.
Okay. So, the minor edits, most were from 323, which I'm.
Yeah, mostly 323. And then, a handful from.
Okay. And then, New Policies.
So, those are the ones that their policy newsletters recommend.
Which we've done some of them.
We've maybe done some. I don't think I updated this one.
Okay.
You know, looking at, back at past agendas to see what we had done.
Looking at 323, oh, yeah, 323, yeah, for civil rights, okay. Okay, so, I think for the minor edits. We. Probably. Are you sure?
If we did, they did not get uploaded to the.
Nothing's been posted. Yeah, we did do several of these, right? We did the reconsideration, we did the. Controversial Speakers, we did Student Activity Accounts, I'm pretty sure, I'll have to go back and check. So, I'll go, I can go back and check that based, I'll go back against the minutes. I did that with some of them, but I think we did also earlier last year, we did some. So, maybe the minor ones we can do in one batch?
Yeah.
It means a lot if people are gonna actually go through it, but.
It's a lot, but I think, I mean, I've been redlining the documents as I've gone through, so that should make it.
Okay.
Easier for people. You don't have to compare two documents. You can, you know, just look through and see what.
Okay.
The changes are.
Okay.
And I'm happy to go ahead and do the ones that, you know, I hadn't gotten to September yet, but I'm happy to go ahead and do those.
Okay.
As well.
Okay.
And then, you know, if you want, can bring them back to our next Policies of Committee Meeting, or we could just put them on an agenda for the full committee.
Okay. And then, the substantive, substantive changes, do we?
Okay, so these will include the ones that we just talked about.
Yep.
And then, other, others as well.
These we probably need to review, these are gonna need to get reviewed by John. Before we can go forward with them. Yep. So, I don't know how we want to do that. If we want to give it to human batches. So I don't know how we wanna do that, if we wanna give it to him in batches, um, that would be up to him. So we probably should. One, we're going to, um, redline all minor changes. Um, and then. Put on whatever agenda you decide to put it on. I'm going to suggest that you give, um, school committee more than two or three days, I would put it, give it to them, and then. Like, two weeks later, do it as a vote, so they have time to review, it's a lot to review, you're gonna go through everyone. Secondly, we need to send John. List of substantive changes. To review and give feedback. And I suggest that we, like, we're never gonna be able to do this in one meeting.
No.
Um, so maybe we.
If you look on that page in H, I kinda like broke down, it's not exact math, but how many policies there were under each.
Well, what I'm suggesting is maybe we just. Ask for like, you know, one meeting, we review the As and the Bs. And the next meeting, we could do the Cs. Ds and Es, then G's gonna be alone. H and I, that's a lot, J should be alone, and then K.
Yep.
So it may take us, you know, like six months or so.
Right, it took us a year.
So we'll break it out. Okay, and also, it helps to do that because there are different people you need to bring in.
Right.
Based on the letter number, the letter category, because it could be financial, it could be. I T, it could be teaching and learning.
Right.
Um, okay.
And then new policies would be ones that are not.
So. Yeah, we probably should also have him review, like, he has to make sure he can operationalize.
Right.
That all these new policies. Service analysts in school, I don't know if you wanna update this, the, I, I'm in that one, so like, or I can go through it too, so some we've already adopted.
I didn't check this page against past agendas or minutes, so.
Yeah.
And I know you did a lot of work in the Is.
Yeah, I M G A, we did, um, we adopted that. J I C K, I thought we all threw good, but I'll go back and check that. But we could just give it to, give it to him also for him to review. And, okay. The adoption. Uh, that in theory could be its own. Or his own agenda item once it's done, like that, I mean, cause. Eleven new policies. Because a new policy, you don't have to, you know, you're not reviewing, comparing it to an old policy, you just, you know, and, and John hopefully can speak to it.
Right.
Um, particularly on the technology stuff, but, you know, uh, we, we don't know. Yeah. The competency determination, that might be, I'm gonna pull that out.
I think that should maybe be a separate.
And the, um. And the, uh, I forget what the, um, letter is, but the graduation.
Right.
That could be both its own.
And those have a separate specific deadline, so. From Dussie, we're supposed to have, have it in place by then. End of the year, so.
Okay. All right, so I can put together an email to John about that. Okay. Oh, I L D.
Yes. That was also on our agenda.
Right. So, we adopted the handbook policy, which I personally believe is not. Well, I don't know how. I don't, I guess I don't understand if, if a parent does not wanna consent to all of the surveys, and then they don't sign the handbook. What that, if there's any repercussions to that. I have been told anecdotally at the high school, there are teachers that are requiring it for points, that you are deducted points if your parent doesn't sign the handbook. So I'm not sure how that works. If you don't wanna consent to that.
Right. I mean, I think that's a question for. John.
Yeah. So the I L D itself, I, so he's, he, he gave us, I, at least that's my record show. I L D, which is the same one that the M A S C, like, that's what he.
But that's what he's recommending that we.
Yeah. Which is fine, but I just, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure if it's actually properly operationalized in the handbook. Which is not a policy subcommittee. Responsibility.
Right.
But I think it's a legitimate question. Right, cause it's like a parent may inspect upon request a survey created by a third party before the survey's administered, but if you've already consented. Like, I don't know, like, you know.
So my understanding is that what policy I L D is addressing is this federal statute.
Yeah.
Which, you know, has certain requirements.
I don't know if that is around surveys.
It is. Okay. It's specific to surveys that address those eight topics that are listed out. And so. I think about whether we're properly operationalizing it, you know, John would have to, have to speak to. But that statute requires consent if the student is under eighteen.
Before.
And also requires that you, that the district notify parents. By email or U S mail before administering the survey, give them an opportunity to consent, to opt out and or review.
It says the district will directly notify parents, guardians annually at the beginning of the school year and during the school year when surveys and it's evaluated. They shall have the opportunity to opt their child out of the participation and then survey analysis evaluation. It's kinda weird.
It is, but that's the way the statute.
Yeah.
Is set up.
So, um, so we just need to make sure that, um, one, how do parents not consent? Like, it's weird, you know, that you're required to consent. And then. Yeah, I guess that's the question, so how does this operationalize? But I still think we should probably adopt this.
I would agree, I mean, it's not a significant change, if a change at all over what our current version.
I thought the current version was, um, not prior consent.
No, the policy, the version that's in the handbook right now does require.
In the handbook, but I don't think in our policy manual.
No, no, I mean, in the policy manual, not in the handbook, um, the version in there right now requires consent.
Prior consent. Okay.
And we had discussed at that first meeting in July, a version that would not require prior consent, and they're going back to the. Consent, because that's what the statute requires.
Okay. Okay, um, okay, so that's just, so we should, um. Do we, uh, request to put this on the agenda, do we wanna wait, I mean, for September fourth, or?
I'm ready to move it forward on the fourth, but, you know, assuming you have an opportunity to have your questions answered.
Yep. Well, I don't, it, it, voting for this is not, the, the, how, the operational is.
A separate issue.
But I think he needs to be able to speak to it. For sure.
Put that on the agenda for now.
And then also, um, how he's gonna, how they, um, do they actually send the surveys, I have no idea.
I know I've gotten emails notifying me that there would be a survey and what to do if you wanted to opt out, I don't remember. Specifically beyond that, but I do. Have a recollection of receiving, that's kind of a communication from last year.
Okay. All right, so that would be the fourth, um, we will, uh, send, so you're gonna redline all the minor changes and put on an. An agenda for, I don't know when.
I'll try and put them on for the fourth for discussion, and then we can vote, and then, you know.
We can vote the update, we don't have to do a reading unless the members.
But I just mean, if we, I'll try and have them materials in the folder for the fourth.
Why wouldn't we vote it?
Well, you said more than two days to review it.
Depending on when you get it in, I mean, if you can get them in. Yeah, it's probably, it's late, late by tomorrow, yeah, so maybe we should just vote them on the.
Whatever the meeting is after that.
We're gonna send him a list of the substantive changes for him to review and give feedback, broken up by category, um, same with new policies. Specifically asking him to, uh, or we will pull out separately. I K F D's competency determination, graduation requirements is its own agenda item, again, at a future meeting. And we will ask the committee to adopt I L, the updated I L D. Um, with John to speak to how the operations. Okay, okay, what else? Is that it?
I think that's. Um, ambitious plan, so yeah.
Um, yeah, well, I don't know, um, whether we are going to. Are we going to try to get, then start going through the entire manual? Or you're saying your, your, that is inclusive of everything?
My thought was if we.
This isn't just the bulletin, like, there's other, I think there are other.
Okay, I mean, we could either do it.
You know, I don't think it was done for years.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we could do it that, you know, if we're doing A and B at our next meeting. We're looking at the ones that their M A S C is recommending, and you have others in those categories that you think. We should be looking at, we could just make it part of that process.
It's a lot.
Okay, or we just work on getting everything up to date with the M A S C recommendations.
We should do.
And then.
And then we can go back and start.
Yeah.
Trying to go through, you know, everything, cause they go back, everything was done in twenty eighteen.
Yes.
So eighteen to, say, twenty-three, I, I'm not sure how much was updated in there. So, and, so, I, cause I think, I mean, just in developing this spreadsheet, I saw stuff that was like. It wasn't in bullet, in one of these bulletins, but it doesn't match M A S Cs.
So I was thinking it would be helpful either in the, where, right now, in the policies, there's the footer that says. The twenty eighteen date that they were adopted. Either in there or in the index, if there's somewhere that we're noting the date of review. You know, so if we know that a policy was reviewed in October of twenty twenty-five, then theoretically, that tells a future committee. Any changes M A S C recommended before October twenty twenty-five. The committee has looked at and talked about, and if it doesn't match.
So you mean a review if we're not changing?
Even if we're not changing it, that we're noting that it was reviewed.
Okay.
And then certainly noting when we update policies.
Well, we have to, right, cause that would be at the bottom.
Right, exactly.
Um, the date would be at the bottom, um, the other thing that is also possible is that. Policies may have been updated and they were never actually loaded onto the website, which is also quite possible. Um, and there's no way to, I'm not going back and looking at minutes, and there's no way we can do that, so.
No, I think if we just refine that process going forward, so that that's happening.
The other thing is, um, I think I had said, I think, if you go back, if you look at our website. Like, the M A S C one has, where you can click on, it's a hyperlink from the letter to the document, you don't have that, you have to toggle back and forth.
Right.
So, um, I don't know what's involved in doing that, it might be a lot, cause we have over like three hundred policies, but it would. Be nice to have the index and then just the hyperlink.
Yes, I had thought we could create one, but if you'd use a hyperlink. Because the PDFs are all stored in a. Because of the way they're in the Google Drive, if you link to the policy, it just takes you to that folder in the drive, it doesn't take you to the specific PDF.
Right.
John had talked to Stephen about it, and Stephen, I think, had some ideas that we could try, so.
Well, that's his.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just bring that up to John as well. And otherwise, somebody's gonna have to actually do this.
Right.
Like load them up.
Right.
And make, and make the one.
But so we can try and.
I think we should, cause I think, I mean, the other option is we actually do it at M A S C, but there's a cost associated. I'm not sure that it's, you know, necessarily worth it, cause I don't, they don't monitor it, they just.
It's just.
You know, so I'm not sure, but they do it in that form.
I think if there's a solution that they have in-house, and it's just a matter of accomplishing it.
Okay.
We should, you know, consider that, and if that's. Not feasible, then we could discuss whether M A S C hosting it makes sense, but.
Okay.
You know, I do think making a linkable index will make the policy manual.
More useful.
Much more usable for everyone.
Yeah. Uh, the other thing too, is that when you go to the actual list of the documents, they're truncated. So, I guess, it's not, you know, like, you'd wanna be able to see the whole thing.
And they sort weirdly, sometimes they're alphabetical, and sometimes.
Yeah.
They're reversed, or I don't know what's going on, but.
Yeah, yeah, we wanna make sure that they're properly alphabetized too, so, um, okay.
Okay.
Is there anything, do we have any other, um. Outstanding policy, no, I don't think so.
So, I think everything, I L D was the only one from the July meeting that we needed to come back to, so. Do we wanna select a date for the end of September, cause I know you.
I can do, um. Let's see, um. That's a crazy week, yeah, that's great, um, that week is out.
Okay, maybe we could do the first week of October too, I mean.
Uh, well, we could also do, cause we, so we're on October twenty-third, right?
Right.
Um, we could do September twenty-ninth or September thirtieth.
I think either one of those is fine.
You wanna do Tuesday the thirtieth?
Sure.
Then it's technically, we're still in September, so it would be policy. And on a, that's a Tuesday, I can do, and I can do, like, I can do eight, eight thirty.
I just have school drop off, so anything after that.
Wanna do eight thirty?
Fine, Tuesday the thirtieth at eight thirty?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, and then we have the other ones just, oh, you know what I was gonna ask you to do, I, so go through this, we have October twenty-third?
Yes.
Um, so, the, it's Thanksgiving.
Right.
Um, so, do you wanna do the twentieth? The week before?
That's fine, we have a school committee meeting that night, which is fine with me, as long as it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so Thursday. Um, I, yeah, I need to do eleven.
Eleven's good.
And then we also have, um.
The same problem in December, right.
So, um. I, I mean, I could do the week before, it's a little crazy. But I could do the eighteenth.
Uh, I can do the eighteenth.
Again, I have to do it, like, after ten thirty, like, eleven.
Eleven. And if the, if that ends up being just too crazy of a time of year, we can.
Um, and then, let's see, while we're at it, let's do. One, two, three, four, so I, so January twenty-second?
Yes.
Eleven. And then one, two, three, four, which is, no, it's not vacation, so the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
February? Uh, March I will be away, but I can zoom in, one, two, three, four, the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Four is probably. School vacation week?
I think so. When's Patriots Day? Patriots Day is the twentieth.
Yeah, so that's a hard.
So do you wanna pump it out another?
The thirtieth?
Yeah.
Four would be May twenty-eighth, that works for me, and then we're done, it's an election, I don't know.
So should we plan for the third, that we're gonna do sections A and B?
Um, for the minor edits, or?
No, for the.
For the substantive efforts, uh, 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 sure, wait a minute, hang on. A, B. We probably could do C, is that too much? Yeah, we could just do A and B.
Okay.
There's only a few in C, but. A. And B falls. So we'll tell John.
Right.
List of substantive, so, uh, nine, say thirty. A, B. Policies.
Okay.
Okay.
And I will share this spreadsheet with him as well, so that he.
Okay.
Can see.
You, and it's in the Google Drive, right, it's in some kind of a drive.
It might be in my personal drive, I'm having trouble
That's fine.
getting stuff into the school committee drive, but.
You want to, you can do the update, so we won't, I won't try to
Yep.
do the updates, you.
Yeah, I can do that, okay.
Great.
Perfect. Sounds good.
All right, return.
So.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we will return at eleven fifty-four.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.